Mr. City Council Police, it's on the call meeting of the City Council to be held in the sixth floor conference room, 801 Crawford Street, 6:00 PM, Monday, January 13, 2014, for the purpose of a public work session. In addition, you may consider our motion to go into closed meeting by order of the mayor. Mr. Cherry?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Mr. Meeks?
Here.
Mr. Moody?
Here.
Ms. Simms?
Here.
Ms. Randall?
Here.
Mayor Wright?
Here.
Mr. Rowe?
Thank you, Deborah.
Well, Happy New Year, everybody.
Happy New Year.
It's hard to believe that 2014 is New Year. We have two items tonight on this work session, and then tomorrow evening on the work session, we'll have Dr. Jim Cook make his report about the toll impact study, which is very timely because we want to get this up to the General Assembly. And so we tried to keep tomorrow evening's agenda light so that we'll have plenty of time for his presentation and your questions. You've got a copy of the report, and he'll be doing a PowerPoint presentation, too. So I recommend that you bring your copy of the report to tomorrow's meeting. The first item of tonight's agenda, we have two, is the General Assembly session. I sent you this report right after the New Year, and I've added a couple of additional things, and you've got a copy before you. As you know, the 2014 session of the General Assembly convened last Wednesday. The new governor got inaugurated on Saturday, and this is the 60-day session. Most General Assembly sessions are about money, but the 60-day session really is about money because they have to consider and adopt the budget for the two years, the biennium, that starts July 1. And so that's going to be a big matter for them to consider. Plus, they'll consider the caboose bill, and that is the bill that amends the existing budget that ends on June 30. The pages that follow my memo are the committee assignments in the House. The Speaker of the House, Speaker Howell, has made his assignments, and those committees are up and running. On the Senate side, there are two vacancies. One is from Hampton Roads, and the other is for the new Attorney General. And so the committee assignments and the committee leadership in the Senate has not yet been resolved. So we don't have a firm committee with us for the Senate. Lastly, in addition to the schedule in my memo, you have one of the early Virginia municipal league's legislative reports. I will send you these via email. You may get them from the VML directly, and if you do and you don't want mine, just let me know. This particular report from the VML has the schedule again. Remember, the VML Legislative Day, Deborah's already sent that out to you, is February 6. That's the first Thursday in February. And they changed the name from Legislative Day to Government Day. But it's the same thing. It's a one-day event, typically a morning meeting at the Marriott, lunch right there in the big room. Typically, they try to get a speaker that is pertinent to that particular session, either an issues-type speaker. And I would bet, and I don't know this, they'll probably try to get the new governor. The new governor, for example, speaks with the Joint House/Senate tonight at 7:00. Sherry is up there. Sherry has hit the ground running. She's already giving homework assignments to everybody that's in this room and beyond, to include David Stuckwish, as bills get introduced that pertain to education. Which brings me to this point, and it's a discussion that we have annually, that I have with City Council. That is, is that we'll see a bill, we'll get a call either from Sherry or from a member of our General Assembly delegation saying, "What is Portsmouth's position on this legislation?" And it may come on Friday, or it may come on Wednesday. It comes on an inconvenient time, and they need a response pretty quickly. We'll give the response like we've done before, let you know. And if you say no, instead of going straight, we should have turned just a little bit to the right on that bill. It's repairable. We've got until the end of the session to make any course changes. So as bills come our way and we review them, if it's something that we can bring and put on the work session agenda, we'll do that. But any position, any response that we give back to Sherry or a member of the General Assembly, we'll let you know, and you can tell us whether or not we're need to modify our response. Is that a good? We had the same discussion last year, and it worked out well. I encourage you, if you're scheduled as such, to go to Legislative Day. We'll help you with registration. We'll take care of the registration, and we'll take care of the transportation, too. In the afternoon of Legislative Day, we go from the Marriott over to the General Assembly Building and meet with whoever we need to meet with. Again, our meeting will probably be dictated by what issues we need to address. For example, last year, Mayor Wright and I walked into a hearing on the Port bill, and it was very appropriate for us, and very timely, because Mayor Wright got a chance to speak and state the city's position to the committee. So, again, if you can make it, I encourage you to do so, and we'll take care of the logistics. Okay?
John, before leaving that, I'd just like to say that we are very fortunate to have an individual who is very knowledgeable and is well-recognized in the circles in the state of Virginia. And she keeps us well abreast, and she's well-respected in the position that she's in because she's been around a long time. And sometimes it's interesting to just follow with her in her trail. Like, I've done it. I think everyone, if you've never had that experience, do that. Then you've got a greater appreciation as to the role that she plays and the impact it has on what happens in our city of Portsmouth. But you need to...
Yeah, everybody knows her.
That's right. Everybody from the top, from the governor on through, they all know Sherri Neal. And every legislative liaison from every county and state around, she is more than worth her weight in gold for the city, and I thought we needed to know that.
I am so glad that you said that because I feel the same way. She is really good.
She's a superwoman.
She is a real pro. She's very much on top of her abilities up there. And it is about relationships. I mean, even when you oppose a piece of legislation, you need to have a good relationship with that member of the General Assembly. And she works hard to get those relationships. Now, Sherry's going to be sending back periodic video reports, and we're going to show one tomorrow evening. It's too early in the session to make this interactive, but hopefully between now and the first week in April, we'll have a couple interactive sessions where we'll actually have Sherry up here through the technology, and we can actually talk to her. Tomorrow's going to be a video that we will post once we have it on our website.
Is that via Skype, John?
Something similar to Skype, yes, sir.
It's good.
Okay? The next item is a briefing on the school matter. You receive this briefing book, and will be pretty much following this book. And, Deborah, please do. And this will be a briefing that both Carol and I will give you. I'm not, I don't have what you're talking...
Yeah, that was our briefing on the status of the funds due back to the city. So we've gotten some additional information since the time that we gave that report. And in total, the schools had about $14 million remaining at the end of last year that needed to come back to us. And they've returned everything except for the roughly $1.4 million in outstanding money that John's speaking about, plus about $66,000 that was due back out of their school construction fund.
At that particular moment, they had not returned the money. Since December the 10th, the money that we talked about at that date has been returned. When the schools spend funds that the City Council has not yet appropriated, it eliminates the opportunity for citizens' participation in the process. When you appropriate funds, you do it in a public meeting. It's on the agenda, and the public has an opportunity to speak. They can sign up and speak and give you their opinion on whether or not this was a good use of the funds. But when you're cut out of the process, the citizens of Portsmouth are cut out. And lastly, the schools are padding their operating budget, and I'll go through all these items. Oops, I'm sorry. Now, this is not a complicated matter. In fact, it's rather simple. One does not have to be a CPA to understand the rules. One does not have to have a degree in finance or accounting to understand the rules. The school's explanation for where we are is that the rules have changed on us, and that has been said at their meeting. In fact, invite you to look at the special meeting of the school board on December 12, when that statement is said, but a few times. Also, everybody does it this way, the way we're doing it. Another explanation. And then, lastly, what we're doing is procedurally okay. Well, what are the rules? Neither the city manager, me, or our Chief Financial Officer, Carol, make up the rules. You don't make up the rules. One finds the rules in the Code of Virginia or the state code. And the Virginia General Assembly enacts the rule. Now, this is the state code. I mean, George, how many volumes? Maybe 25 volumes of books like this, and they contain all the rules. But there are two very simple, basic rules that have been on the books for more than a half a century. And when they went on the books, they went on essentially the same way then that they exist today. Now, the first rule from the state code is Section 22-1-100 that says that all monies, all sums, that are given appropriated by the governing body to the school board that are unspent as of June 30 have to come back to the city. Pretty clear language. And at the end of most every code section, you'll find a footnote like this, which provides the legislative history of that particular code section. And so this tells you that the General Assembly considered this in 1956 in its extra session. And you can find that in the Acts of the General Assembly, which is published after each session of the General Assembly in a book like this. And to give you some feel for this particular section enacted by the General Assembly in 1956, it was introduced as House Bill 13. It was approved or signed into law by the governor on September 29, 1956. And then it was reenacted by the General Assembly in 1980 when they reenacted that whole Section 22-1 that deals with education. So that's the first rule. You have unspent local money at the end of the year, it comes back to the city. Cannot be spent. It cannot be carried forward. Now, the next rule is a, well, what does this section mean? The school board must return to the city any and all of its unspent local funds at the end of the year. That's local, not federal, not state, but local. The schools cannot carry forward into the next fiscal year these unspent local monies. And the school administration cannot obligate the year-end unspent funds for use in the next fiscal year by slapping a label on them. They're either spent, or they're not spent. And they have to be spent in that fiscal year, not the next year. Now, the next rule, the second rule, is from Section 15.2-2506, and that's a rather long, it's about three paragraphs long. That's the title. Here is the history of the bill. And the pertinent part of this is that no money shall be paid or become available to be paid for any expenditure unless and until it's appropriated by City Council. Now, that's a rule that applies to all the monies for both the city and the schools. It doesn't make any difference how it gets into the government. It can come through the door, through the window, over the transom, under the door. You've got to appropriate the funds. If the schools have leftover monies and they return it back to the city for those funds to be spent by anybody, whether it's the city administration or the school administration, you've got to appropriate the funds. And what does this do? It sets up a very public process, a very public process for citizens' participation. It gets the citizens involved. They may say, "You know, this is a perfectly appropriate way." Or, "My neighborhood doesn't have a fire station. Let me tell you that I think it's better to spend these monies on the fire station," or some other purpose. But the citizens have a chance to say how the money is spent. Now, here's the history of this particular section. It was originally part of the 1950 code. It was reenacted by the General Assembly in '59, and you can see the history on up to its 2009 session. So this has been a rule that's been around for a long time, just like the other. You cannot spend money unless it's been appropriated by City Council. Now, what it also means is that all the appropriations lapse at the end of the year. When you appropriate monies for our operating budget, come June 30, if we've got leftover funds, those appropriations lapse. And the same is true for the school system. So two things, two points. You cannot spend money unless it's appropriated, two, the appropriation lapses. Now, let's focus in on the school's... ...here. Now, here's the actual expense. This is for the Dominion Power bill. This is the actual column, even though the title's off a little bit, and that's the budgeted amount. In 2010, 2011, the fiscal year that started on July 1, 2010, ended on June 30, the schools spent a little shot of $2.5 million on electricity. That's writing checks to Dominion Power. They had budgeted $3.9. And you can see the numbers, 3.2 to 5.668, 2.4 to 4.4 almost. And this year, year-to-date, $1.479 against a budget of $4.5 million. Now, it's safe to say that their annual electric bill runs somewhere between $2.5 to $3.00 a year. And your electric bill is pretty predictable unless you add a new building, air conditioning, something that hadn't been air-conditioned before. You know this from your own experience. You can pretty much guess what your, from year-to-year, from month-to-month, what your electric bill is going to be. Now, keep this in mind. Now, this is a status report of purchase orders, and you've got that in your book. And that is Tab 7. You might want to turn to Tab 7. Now, this report was run by the schools off of the Munis system. Munis is the software system that is the accounting system for both the school system and for the city. And let me take you across the column. The left-hand column is the year, 2013. The next column is the purchase order number. You'll notice that it has the year and then a four-digit number. Purchase orders for internal controls are issued sequentially numbered. The next is the date that the purchase order is... Well, the next column is the vendor that the purchase order is being issued to. The next column is the date. The next column is the amount of the original purchase order. And this column is the balance as of the date of the report. Now, I'm going to cover this later, but I want you to focus. This is from Page 2 of the report, and you can turn to Page 2, that on May 31, 2013, This year, it's a 31-day period. There's no way that you can dispute the fact that those are days in the current fiscal It says so on the bill. The fiscal year started July 1. It also tells you when the meter's read. And you get the same bill at home. This should not be a strange bill for you. This one happens to be for the Churchland High School at 4301 Cedar Lane, and the amount of the bill is $27,800. Now, this bill and all the other bills that got processed that day was paid, and was a sum of $104,000, was paid with, out of this account, 2901.
Everything's got a fingerprint.
Now, you see that on the payment voucher as a stamp at the bottom right-hand corner where they go through, and that tells the accounting department where to pay the bill from. That's the purchase order that had $1 million as of June 27. Million dollars that was 2012-13 money, not 2013-2014 money. This is money that has not been appropriated by you. The citizens of Portsmouth did not get a chance to weigh in on how this money was Two things wrong. That was unspent money, and that fiscal year should have come back to you, and before it got spent in any fashion, you had, or you're required by law to appropriate the funds.
Did they not have funds in the current year to pay that with?
Yes, sir. Remember what their budget is for this year? It's more than $4 million.
That includes the money that they brought forward, that $4 million includes the money that they brought forward from the previous year that was unspent.
The next payment voucher is November 20. And for some reason, they split fund this payment. They charged $16,670 to this purchase order, and then they charged the balance to that amount. But the point of the matter is that they're using last year's money to pay this year's bill. And you can go through, and you can look at the bills and see that the same situation. It's very definitely for electric costs, electric expense that occurred, incurred this year. The last one in this group was November 25. It amounted to almost $73,000 out of last year's funds. Now, as late as December 20, 2013, when you look at their accounting transactions, they were still using Purchase Order 2901 to pay electric bills. These are year-end unspent funds that should have been returned to the city per this section of the code, 22-point-1-100. And they were spent without your appropriation. They were spent without the citizens of Portsmouth having a chance to step up to the lectern and say, ladies and gentlemen, we think this is a great expenditure. We think appropriating these funds back to the schools was good. Or they could say, we want it for a fire station or a recreation center. Now, when you go back into time, you might remember that slide that said, here's the actual, here's the budget, and that we're not even close. The schools have used the line item for electricity for other expenditures. In fact, in 2011-2012, they paid for the I.C. Norcom roof out of the account. Now, if you didn't go back and look at that, when you just look at it on the surface, it looks like it's an electric expense. So, at the very least, it distorts the amount of electricity that was purchased.
So, is that why it was 3.2 million that year?
I don't know why it was 3.2. We tried to distill that number. It may be the reason. They also took a half a million dollars, they charged to this account, but transferred it over to textbooks. Now, let me show you this slide. On June 28 and 29 of 2012, the school administration transferred the sum of $1.123 from its electric budget to the following expenditures: OPEB, more than $1 million, and student desk. Now, we have, we have an interesting situation here. I wanted to ask you to help me explain this because I'm not sure I can do it. As part of the capital budget request for 2013-2014, the budget that you adopted last June, the schools asked for certain funding for capital projects. And in that list was roof work for Norcom and roof work for Churchland Primary. We took them at their face value, that these are requests. You know, one of the things that you've got to do is you've got to fix a roof. A leaking building is a quick way to deteriorate the building. Well, come to find out, now that we've done this research, at the time the request was made, one project had been completed.
Norcom roof.
And one was substantially completed. You want to add it?
Yes, and the one that was substantially completed, the Churchland Primary roof, the final payment was made the following month, June, one month after the city council was asked to appropriate a total of $1.8 million for those two projects.
And that Norcom roof is the one that had already been paid for out of the
Yes.
Utility fund?
The year before. Now, the school board adopted a resolution on August 22, asking you to reappropriate its unspent money. And let me refresh your memory. On their first bidding in July, when they met to organize, they considered a resolution to turn back $6.4 million worth of encumbered funds. Well, that's like fingernails going across a blackboard. You don't turn back encumbered funds. I mean, it made no sense. And so, we talked with the school, Carol and I met with David and Merrill, and said, we think you're confused. Now, how much of this is money that is actually unspent? And how much of it is for bills for expenditures that you made in June, but you won't get the bill until July? And they came back, and they said, and they gave us the numbers. We didn't rob the numbers. They said, okay, we got it. Five millions unspent, and 1.4 are for bills for expenditures that we incurred for 2012-2013. Now, they've asked you to reappropriate that money. We told them, this is what I told David, and this is what I've told representatives of the school board, too, when I met with them with the finance committee. If you can justify the request, I will recommend it to council. You heard me say that the first, in July, and you about fainted when I said that, but I mean it. If they can justify it, I will recommend it. Now, they break down that $5 million. $2.5 million is for
CSEP. It's a regional special education program that is run in the city of Norfolk. And the school board's cost for that runs somewhere in the neighborhood of $4 million a year. And every year, they've budgeted for that amount. But for some reason, in the current fiscal year, 13-14, they under-budgeted that account by $2 million and asked that $2 million, or slightly more than $2 million, of last year's money be re-appropriated for that purpose. And while we can see that there's a need because they clearly under-budgeted the funds that they needed for the program, we don't understand why they under-budgeted it because all they've done now is create an ongoing hole in their budget that's going to have to be, and they're using one-time money to pay for that, and they're going to have to make sure that the operating expenses are paid with ongoing dollars over the long run.
Now, the other, the balance of it, $2.5 million are for operating expense. And they're saying that we need $1.6 million to pay such operating expenses as utility payments. Now, you, I don't get it. I don't get it. How can you say you need money to pay utilities when you're using last year's money to pay this year's utility bill? When you're sitting on a budget that's more than adequate to pay your utility bill?
Yeah, every year that we looked at, going back to 2011, the amount that they originally budgeted for electricity was more than enough to pay for their actual electric costs without their moving money from the prior year into that electric budget. So, and what they also did was they moved money in, and then they moved it out for non-electric purposes. For OPEB. For roofs.
Well, where does this, almost $2 million that council appropriated in the current budget, that was not based on need, and I'm talking about the roofs? I mean, that's $1.8 million. You've got to add that to the equation.
Yeah, you do.
It's evident that we cannot answer these questions because we don't have the information where we can talk to one another, the both elected boards, to find out what it is. I think the questions that we are generating legally and logistically, according to what the figures are saying, too, but we aren't, we can't get the answers until we meet together with the other elected board and get some kind of dialogue. We are seeing it because the figures are definitely telling us and depicting a certain picture, but we need to be able to get some feedback from them in terms of why certain decisions were made. It's good to have the information, but we aren't getting any of the answers that we need to help us come to some kind of resolve, and we need that.
Maybe I can help. If you were a pro-football player, you expect a pro-football player to know the rules. You would expect a pro-basketball. You can take it down to the high school level. You expect someone who
No.
-- to vote. Ignorance of the rules, particular rule that's been there for more than a half a century.
It's no exception.
Ignorance is not an excuse.
That's right.
The school board has training, in fact, their training is coming up in January, that is on school law and school ethics. The school superintendents have to be certified by the state in order to be a school superintendent. You expect me to know the law. You expect me to know the law that says you can't spend money unless it's appropriated.
Andre, add some.
And the point of the matter is, is that, again, it's not complicated. It's simple. Why they did it is a good question, but that doesn't change what they're supposed to do. What they're supposed to do is follow the provisions of the state code. They need to return the 1.35 back to the city. They need to stop the practice of spending money that you don't appropriate. And they need to stop eliminating the opportunity for citizens to participate in the democratic process. And they need to stop padding their budget. I mean, that's, this is a minor thing compared to the rest of it.
But it still needs an answer.
John, you're being a little kind. You know, anytime you come to an elected body and saying you need money for something, I'm talking about the $1.8 million for some specific items, and those things have already been done, I think that is beyond padding.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Strong words we're using about padding because it brings up some accusations.
It does.
I just was kind of, I was concerned about if they re-appropriated, if they gave us the 1.35 million, would that put them where they need to be?
Yeah. Yeah. Yes, sir.
I don't get it.
It would. We're down to this point. We're down to the 1.35. They're saying that it was spent on expenditures for last year. That's the only thing that they can legally spend it on. You see tonight, you have eyes, that it was spent on expenditures for this current fiscal year. And they can't do that. I can't do it. You can't do it at the state level. You can't do it at the federal level. The expenditure, the appropriation's only good for that appropriation, period.
And you can't add
There's no way they can slap a label on surplus money at the end of the year and say, it's encumbered, and then use it to pay the light bill in October, or November, or December. That's goofy. That is really goofy. You would fire me if I did that.
But we cannot answer that question because they are the only ones that can answer it. We can ask it, and we can request an answer to it, but we need them to answer why things were done. I think there should be some dialogue. I know it may not be protocol, but these are two boards, and we are all accountable for the funding, but we should have dialogue with them as we try to resolve.
I think, I think that's really good. Look, what you're going to hear, and I'm not trying to prejudge, is that the rules have changed. Well, the rules haven't changed. You're going to hear that everybody does it this way, no one does it this way. And you're going to hear that what they're doing is procedurally okay. And to answer your question about the padding
Right near the electric.
There we go.
There it is.
That's just one form of it.
And let me tell you this about, typically, you issue a purchase order to buy a tangible good. If you're going to buy iPad, okay? You issue the, let's say I'm the IT department. I want to buy iPad. I prepare a purchase requisition form. It goes to the purchasing agent, iPad costs $1,000. What the purchasing agent then does is turn to the budget folks and say, does John have $1,000 in his supply count for an iPad? They come back and say, no, he's got 500. Then the purchase order doesn't get out of the building. The purchase is not made. But if they come back and say, yes, then they seize, they put a hole on that $1,000 because the purchase order is then sent to Apple, and it is like a contract to buy one iPad. Something that looks like a purchasing order goes back to me. Something that looks like a purchasing order goes back to me. It's the receiving report. And the receiving report gets filled out to me when the iPad comes, and I look at it and say, "Yes, that's exactly what I ordered. It works, it's in good shape." And I sign the bottom of it and send it back to finance. And then finance then will pay the bill when the invoice comes in. That's how a purchase order works.
That's true.
And you do it to buy things that you can touch and feel. I don't know of anybody that issues a purchase order, except for one organization, for utilities.
And in fact, there are a number of items that were on the outstanding purchase order list that are, really should not be a purchase order item, including $100,000 to the Virginia Employment Commission for expected costs. And when the school's draft CAFER came out, the amount that they showed in outstanding encumbrances was that same amount, $1.35 million. And what that means then is none of that money related to any expenditure for the prior year, not a dime. All of it was being carried over into the current, the complete $6.4 million. The $5 million and the $1.4 million was really unspent money that did not pertain to any fiscal year 13 expenditure.
What do they say when you ask that they re-appropriate the money? What does the school board say?
Well, I can tell you precisely, we're into the last week of June, and Carol and I are meeting with David and Merrill. And I said, "If you have money that, that's unspent, I recommend that, I strongly recommend that you return it." And he said, "No, I know your game. You're going to reduce my budget. I think I may have sent you the minutes of that meeting." We take good minutes, notes of the meetings that we meet. And I said, "Give me a chance. Give me a chance to surprise you." And we left that meeting at a standoff. And it troubled me so much that I sent David an email, which you got a copy of, that said, "David, I really ask you not to carry that money forward. I ask you to return it." I didn't hear from him. I bump into him about the 1st of July, and it's in the foyer. And he says, "I'm taking a resolution to the school board for its meeting on Thursday." And it was that brief of conversation, he gets on the elevator, and I'm going someplace else. I wasn't aware that he had taken the, a resolution, that $6.4 million resolution, until Friday. So sometime between the time that I met with him, the last week in June, and the 3rd of July, he did a 180. But remember what that resolution was? It was, said, "We have $6.4 million worth of encumbered money that we're going to return." Well, that doesn't make sense. I mean, doesn't, it, it just doesn't make sense at all. That led to the next series of conversations, which was, "Wait a minute, this is not encumbered funds. Is the money spent, is it obligated for an expenditure that happened prior to June 30th?" And essentially, they said, "Well, let us check." And they came back and said, "$5 million is surplus money. The $1.35 is money that's obligated for expenditures that we've incurred prior to June 30th." Well, we're finding that that money was not obligated for expenditures that happened in June. It's being spent on expenditures in October...
November.
...and November... And December.
And it really doesn't matter why, because the fact is that they...
It's just the wrong question.
It's the wrong...
They cannot do that...
You can't do it.
...in compliance with the state law.
Mr. Thomas, you have a question?
This was sort of to address your question. Your question, Ms. Randall. I have, the, the council has asked me to look at encumbrances. I went back to the director of finance with a lot of information that John had already given me. At that point, I asked to come in to help them solve the situation, at least address it. And to this point, they have said, "No." So, there has been communication, was what I was trying to get at. There has been communication. I offered it, and it has not, I have not been...
It was not reciprocated.
And let us talk about Paige's point about what an encumbrance is. Do you want to talk about that?
Appreciate that, sweetheart.
Well, as John mentioned earlier, encumbrances are really a budgetary tool. So, when, when you report on an encumbrance basis, it's not GAAP, not generally accepted accounting principles. And when the schools, or anybody, issues a purchase order, it then creates a hold on that money in the budget. And when that, when that bill is paid, that's when the, the purchase order goes away. And since it's really intended as a budget management tool, by the time you get to the end of the fiscal year, what the city does is, except for capital projects which are multi-year, we liquidate all of the encumbrances, because there's no need to...
Hold it in.
There's no need to, to have a budgetary control in place. At that point, the fiscal year is over, and all we're doing then is taking those bills that come in after July 1 and determining which fiscal year they go in. Do they pertain to items that were, were either procured or, or ordered in the year before? Or do they pertain to items that are expenditures of this year? And if the schools had done that, the, the, there would be no $1.075 million remaining PO for the, for the Dominion Power bill. They would have just, as the bills came in, they would have looked and said, "Well, this one is for September through October service." So that belongs in fiscal year 2013-14. And one that came in in July that pertained to June would have been accrued back to the prior fiscal year. And so the, the school's actual numbers for last year should already, they're on it, they're on a modified accrual basis, as is the city. And those actual numbers then represent all of their expenditures for the last year. There should not be any encumbrances outstanding, because that is not, that's not spent money.
Look at the dates. This bill, and these, these things...
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
George, how can they tell the city auditor that they can't come in? It's still city funds, right? Or does he have limits? Because I mean...
He has limits, because they're a separate legal entity, and they run their own operation. He's, he has access to things like the Freedom of Information Act, the usual tools that an outsider would have, but...
But, I mean, he can't audit the money we give him?
He can't, he can audit whatever they give him back in terms of records. But if they don't, if they choose not to do it, then that's, that's their decision.
He doesn't have a master key.
No, I'm just, he's got limitations on their side.
He does have limitations.
Even though the money's appropriated from...
He's a city auditor. He's, and his, his, his authority is to audit city accounts, not school board accounts.
But wouldn't it be relevant then to, if this is the case, and, and the records are showing all this, it seems to me, since they are elected officials...
There we go.
...that we should have some type of joint discussions in this matter, and come to some conclusion as to what needs to be done, or an else situation. But just, we hear the facts, we hear it, but we need to let them know what we see and what we've heard, so that we can discuss it, so that some conclusion can come to what needs to be done. Because they have, they have the right to not share certain things, I'm sure.
Thank you.
But since they are elected officials too, we can't move them around as though they're puppets, without them having some say-so to the matter, what we are aware of as well.
There's not a gray area. These are all good comments, but, and let me gird you up. You'll hear such things as that, "We're not going to overspend your, our budget." That, that has been said publicly, and you've heard it. This is their CAFER for the year that ended 2012. Now, remember what a CAFER is. We call it the audit. The, the financial statements are prepared by management. The auditor comes in to test, well, not they are adequate, that they barely represent. Turn the page over, an audit finding, you overspent our budget. So, you're going to hear all, I mean, I'll be there with you folks, but hear yourself up, because you're going to hear an awful lot of explanations. But at the end of the day, the law is clear.
Yes.
You cannot carry the money forward, and you can't spend money until it's appropriated.
This would go back to their CFO and the superintendent. I mean, because I don't, I don't think the board members are in every decision that David's making.
No.
I mean, in far as getting done, you know, ready to blast the council, I really think it's the people they have as leaders, and, and the CFO. You know, I mean, those have got to be the two that has to be accountable for this money. I mean, just like you're, y'all two are accountable to us.
That's why it's important that we need to meet, because we, this is on public television, what we're doing here. So it's already been blasted. So what needs to happen from this point on is that we need to come together, or take legal matters. So I think before we go beyond that, we need to come together to talk, for all the board members, including the superintendent and their budget operator as well.
But Bishop, there's another point too. We are elected officials. The school board is, and city council. And we ought to be able to have an open, an honest dialogue with both boards, in a way that we can make sure that the app, the information, that we are digesting it in the way it was intended to be. You can't change the figures. But we need to be able to have some type of open dialogue, because that's an elected body, and we are an elected body. And as such, we ought to be able, because same people that put us in office, put them in office. And this is not good. It does nothing for the credibility. If we cannot dialogue with one another to come to some type of understanding or resolve. Otherwise, we are in a city. We are divided.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, there's been a lot of dialogue on this, particularly on the practices. You know, the figures, as my colleagues said, they are what they are. And I want to applaud you, John, and Carol, and the finance department for getting a handle on this.
Thank you.
You know, the, the state code is the state code. You're either in compliance, or you aren't.
We recognize it.
That's pretty black and white. And the response, and to your credit, you've certainly been dialoguing, been getting short answers, and some of the, some of the, the information, or disinformation is being spread out there. And I got a email from a citizen, came into my BlackBerry on Sunday, said, "City council, give the money back. Y'all are shortchanging the children." So, that's information that's going out from the school administration via some mode. I don't, I don't know what it is. But I'm starting to get those emails. But to the point, I do agree that this needs to come to a head. And I'm not, I'm not certain that more dialogue, especially if it's being stonewalled, is going to work. You're either in compliance with the law, or you aren't. The money that we're talking about is tax money. And just because you're an elected official doesn't mean that you can deviate from what the law says. And by golly, somebody needs to get in compliance with the law. It's past time to do that. Anytime you're turning the bill in to this council that we appropriated $1.8 million for something that had already been purchased, that's, that's serious stuff.
It is serious. And unfortunately, you guys are getting the, the, the short end. You're getting the black eye. Let me tell you, and this is true, because it was told to me, and I know several situations like this. There's a young lady in our church that had to retire of medical disability from the school system. But she had to buy her own supplies for her classroom, and you've heard the same story. I've had other substitute teachers tell me the same thing. This was a full-time story. And yet, I mean, to me, that, that's beyond the pale, when, when you do this type of stuff and not put the money where it should be spent. You heard in the grand jury report, "We can account for all the funds." Well, guess what? The funds have not been accounted for. You've heard the response that it got all spent on schools. It may have, but the citizens of Portsmouth did not have a chance, did not have a chance to tell you how they felt about where that money should be spent. All 96,000 people might have said, "Put it back in the schools. That would be great." But at least they have, and that's what, you work hard to give people a chance to, to speak. You work hard at that. And when, when things like this happen, that gets shut down. The voices of the people get shut down. You don't have an opportunity to hear from the people. It's easy to follow. These dates are not hard to see. That's October 23rd. It's for a 30-day period. And if you can't, don't have a calendar handy, Webco tells you what period it is. These are all dates that occurred in fiscal year 1314, not 1213. But where's the bill paid? It's paid with 1213 money. And Bill, you're absolutely right. You're either in compliance, or you're not. There's not a gray area here. There's not a maybe area.
Not a gray area, period.
That's our presentation.
But we don't control the school board.
Yeah.
I mean, we, we...
No?
I mean, I'm happy to meet with the school board and talk to the school board, but the school board didn't do this. Their staff did. Now, does their staff work for them? I don't know. But this is a legal matter. This is not...
Superintendent works for them.
Yeah.
Well, let me, let me say this. This is the last remaining item for the CAFER, too. The CAFER, you know, we're showing that they owe us $1.35 million. And we need to get that resolved.
That would be a total of $14 million, right?
Right.
That'd be a total of 20 cents on the tax rolls.
Now...
20 cents on the tax rolls.
I'm looking at how, I have a fiduciary responsibility, if we do nothing, not to, not to give them $1.4 million. But one of the options that we're looking at is me bringing back to you a budget amendment, if they don't give the money back, that reduces this year's appropriation by 1.4. It doesn't correct the problem. Five years from now, someone's going to say, "What the heck?"
But it puts balance.
You know? The financial statement should reflect, whether there are thurs or hours, what the true financial situation of the unit of government is. If you were a stockholder of Dominion Power, you would want their statements to be accurate.
That's true.
You want to know where, the citizens of Portsmouth want to know whether or not these statements are accurate. The bond rating agencies want to know that these statements are accurate. They don't want to know, find out after the fact that the electric bill was inflated by 600,000 bucks, because you didn't pay it for electricity, you paid it for roofs.
Mayor?
Yes?
I mean, I, I think I used the term appalled a month ago, when I said, when I, when Carol was telling us that, at the staff level, there was no communication. You weren't getting questions answered. These were numbers. I think I said it wasn't state secrets. That's bad enough. But Mr. Thomas is our independent auditor, who works at our pleasure...
That's true.
And they won't answer his questions? I mean, what does he have to FOIA information? That, that's absurd.
We have to demand that.
It's totally absurd.
We have to demand that.
That's what he's here for.
We have to demand it.
I mean, really.
Well, just like clarification, I'm not independent. I do work for council. But, you know, I went to them as somebody with fresh eyes.
But I'm saying, you don't work for John Ruff.
That's correct.
You know, you're not his, his guy coming in. You work for us.
Correct.
Well, and, you know, this gets to the integrity of their accounting system. When, when you're charging over $1 million to an electric account, and you can't look at their financial statements, or their charge accounts, and say, "Well, that was, they, they obviously spent that amount for electricity," because this is, this is an accounting no-no. The, the amounts that get charged to the electric account should be electric-related. And this is just one slice of their overall budget that we're... And this is just one slice of their overall budget that we're, we're looking at. We don't know to what extent this same type of activity is occurring with other accounts.
But at the same token, we are looking at a discrepancy that you can't hide when numbers are not going to tell you anything other than the truth. And we are seeing that. But I think we ought to be able to find out what happened to give us this much of a distortion. This is very disturbing to me. And, and I've worked in, in the finances from both departments. And as I'm looking at it, I, we need to at least be able to sit together and talk with one another in some type of an exchange. And I commend you, and you know, and you know I know what you, you are capable of doing. But I, I think that we have a problem, and we need to come to some way of resolving it in a way that there is clarity, and most of all, there is integrity of honesty in what has been done the way it is. And, and I'm, I'm really disturbed.
Well, these two weren't just somebody miscoding an invoice. These two were general--
This is methodology.
That's methodology.
These were done two days before the end of the fiscal year via a general journal entry, between somebody had to say, I want to make an entry to charge this account for that, for that purpose.
And that's deceptive.
And we called also that the OPEB was part of a $7 million transfer to their OPEB trust--
The school board wouldn't have called that.
Against--
That was--
A required payment of only a million dollars--
He did, but the school board wouldn't have called that.
And when they asked, why did you do it? The answer was, I'm not going to give the money back, and it's my money.
Well, did, was it school board away of it?
Oh, y'all done.
Okay.
All right? Thank you. Anybody got anything else? Okay, we're adjourned.
See you tomorrow.
Yep.
Thank you.